So that's why it's a little squishy out there.
Just a little bit.
But the good news was, you know, we hadn't had a lot of rain before that, so some of it could soak in. So if everything was wet when this hit, there'd be a little more flooding.
Right. Okay. Well, let's get going this morning.
This conference will now be recorded.
Board chair for a few more days. Pass it on to Commissioner Wise.
Good morning, Nancy Wise, Commissioner and Vice Chair.
Good morning, Bat Malo, Commissioner.
Good morning, Joe Kirby, County Administrator.
Good morning, Jeff Van Arstal, Benton County Sheriff.
Good morning, Suzanne Hoffman, Health Department Director.
Erica Moilo.
Good morning.
Good morning, Teresa Farley, Board Staff.
Good morning, April Holland, Public Health Administrator.
Lynn McKee, Director of Benton County Natural Area Parks Event.
Good morning, Rick Krager, Chief Financial Officer.
Okay. Well, I think we will have a few more staff joining us as we proceed. I can see that Johan, our Equity Diversity and Inclusion Coordinator, is here with us, as is Alyssa Rash, PIO. And we may have some members of the public joining us through our meeting this morning as well. I'd like to welcome you to our Board of Commissioners' Work Session and Business Meeting here on the lands of the Kalapua peoples, who have a true relationship with the United States, but were forcibly displaced onto reservations on the coast and are with us now at the Confederated Tribes of Grand Ronde and the Confederated Tribes of Solas, as are a few remaining Alesi peoples as well. Are there any other announcements? Hearing none, we'll move on to comments from the public. And I do have one written comment that was submitted that I'd like to read into the record. We received testimony from Kristen Jokums, and I'll read it from here. "I am a resident of Benton County and the elected president of the National Federation of the Blind, Lynn Benton Chapter. I speak for myself and for our Benton County members. Last month, our organization reached out to you about a serious crisis in paratransit services for our county. Subsequently, several county officials met with us and other people with disabilities, and also met with dial with us. These meetings have apparently addressed the immediate crisis and started a process that will hopefully restore paratransit, which was once excellent service we once had. We thank you for that. We believe that this crisis would never have happened if the county had fulfilled its ADA mandates to keep people with disabilities informed and to solicit their input on paratransit developments. We are particularly upset that the county called a meeting of the previously defunct or dormant Special Transportation Advisory Committee, with no advance notice to any of the people who have raised the alarm and inadequate posting on the county website, and then ran that meeting as a PR event with not one single mention of the current crisis. This is not the way to restore good relations. We understand that the STACK will soon be merged with the State Transportation Improvement Fund Advisory Committee, and note with alarm that the proposed state rules mandate only one place on this new committee to be given to a person with a disability. We urge that this new committee be expanded from the minimum required by the state and include representation by people with different disabilities. The National Federation for the Blind requests that it be included along with groups representing other disabilities in planning for this new committee. Thank you for your time, and we look forward to continuing more productive engagement with you on transportation issues." Signed, Kristen Jokums, J.D. Thank you. And I know that we also will have public comments. Good morning, Helen, from folks that want to comment on the American Rescue Plan Act funding process. What we have decided to do this morning with respect to that is to hold those comments until after CFO Rick Krager's presentation, and mostly take questions that are of a clarifying nature, because we do have a process set up, or proposed anyway, to take written comments and other comments up through January 4. So we would like to ask anyone that has comments on that portion of the agenda to stick with us or come back at 9:45 to hear that presentation and make comments at that time. Any other, oh, one other note with respect to the agenda, and that is that in terms of item nine, our executive sessions, we will not need to have an executive session under ORS 1926602H, as in horse, for labor negotiations, but we will have an executive session under 2E, or elephant, for property transactions. Any other changes or additions to the agenda? Okay, hearing none, we'll consider it approved and move on to our work session. And the first item on the agenda is our update from the Department of Operations Centers from Suzanne and April.
Good morning. As you may know, the Governor and the Oregon Health Authority held a press conference with partners from OHSU late last week regarding the Omicron variant and what that is expected to bring to us. So April will be talking about...
You are a little difficult to understand. It's a little fuzzy. I just wanted to let you know so that if you can do anything about it, we can make it clear for folks.
Is that better?
I think so.
Yeah, computer issues this morning. April will talk to us today about what she knows so far about planning for that, which obviously needs to happen quickly, but with limited resources. And also can report some good news from last week's mixture of events. So I'll turn it over to April.
Thank you, Suzanne, and good morning, Commissioners and everyone. Here we are again, talking about coronavirus and a new situation that's rapidly evolving. First, I'll go over just what our cases look like for now, for today, and then I'll share what we know about Omicron and what we're doing to plan, as well as what vaccinations are looking like. So as you likely know, Benton County has largely remained in a high community transmission category over the last several months, with some exceptions here and there. We flipped into substantial transmission one week, and I think we will again for this week, though I do anticipate that this may be short-lived. Our two-week case rate is still above 200 per 100,000. And last week, our case rate was approximately 97 cases per 100,000, so we just squeaked by under that 100 threshold. We just had seven fewer cases than last week, though, so we're holding pretty steady for now. Our positivity rate has experienced a little bit of an uptick, went from 2.5 up to 3.9. It's not really too surprising, though, with OSU breaking. They comprise a lot of our testing here. Outbreaks continue, as they have for the last several months. We are focused, instead of on schools, on businesses and medical settings right now and others. Our breakthrough case rate has also remained pretty steady. It's been around 34%, to be more exact, over the last 30 days. 34% of our cases have been fully vaccinated. And I anticipate that we'll see many more fully vaccinated cases as we move forward. In the last few weeks, we did have two additional COVID-related deaths reported, sadly bringing our total in Benton County to 42. Onto the new variant, Omicron. Preliminary evidence continues to come in about this new variant of concern. This variant seems to evade immunity much more than previous strains, and it's much more transmissible. The point now of vaccinating and boosting is to reduce the likelihood of severe illness when someone is infected. There will be some protection against being infected if you're recently boosted, but vaccines, as we know, are intended to reduce severe illness and the worst outcomes in people. And this is going to be much more the case moving forward. Omicron is spreading with astonishing speed and has entered the scene much more rapidly than the Delta variant. Though the data is preliminary, some have estimated that Omicron may be even more transmissible than measles, and I'll just file that under sentences I never thought I would utter aloud. Information is still coming in, and I think we'll adjust down from that very high reproductive number. Last week, however, it was estimated that Omicron comprised about 3.4% of cases in the U.S. And yesterday, those figures were updated to show that it's already estimated to be the most dominant variant in the United States, at about 73-ish percent of cases, with a range there. And in the Pacific Northwest, estimated to comprise almost all cases, about 96%. Some reports that illness appears to be more mild are encouraging, but this is not yet clear, and reports honestly are quite mixed. Even if it is significantly less severe, a really large surge in cases with a highly transmissible strain is likely to have an effect on our healthcare system. For example, and this isn't, this is just a numerical example. If 2% of cases need hospitalization and you have 1,000 cases, that's 20 people. If you have 10,000 cases and 1% need hospitalization, that's 100 people. So bigger pool altogether, more people are going to need care. And as we all know, the healthcare system locally in Oregon, regionally and nationally, is very strained. To be clear, we have not yet detected Omicron in Benton County. We've had some detections in neighboring counties, but in all likelihood, it is here and it's transmitting. However, we're going to be okay. We simply need to remember and practice what works. Pull out your handy Swiss cheese model. Don't rely on a single layer of mitigation. Get vaxxed and boosted. Wear your mask over your mouth and your nose. Avoid crowds, physical distance. Go back to those virtual meetings if you've been meeting in person. Enhance ventilation. Open the windows and doors if you can. Stay home if feeling ill at all. And wash your hands, wash your hands, wash your hands. We're working on plans to get more people boosted, as we know that the antibody response to a booster shot is protective. More on that in just a moment. And, you know, I just gave this long list of mitigation measures. And we know that while avoiding contact with people outside your household provides the most protection. It's a time of joy and gathering with family and friends. If gathering with others, some things that we can do to reduce risk includes ensuring that all participants who can are vaccinated to the extent possible, asking all invitees to take a rapid antigen test if you can get your hands on them, and directly before coming to the event, not three days before, not even one day before, incorporating enhanced ventilation, as I said, opening the windows, or holding activities outdoors if you can. Okay, on to vaccination. We finally, countywide, have made it over that 70% hump of all residents fully vaccinated. We're at 70.1%, including all ages. Our youngest age group eligible, the 5 to 11-year-olds, have been busy getting their COVID shots. We're at 46% of kids with one dose compared to 28% statewide. 32% have already received both of their doses in Benton County compared to 19% statewide. And this is due to efforts from so many partners, from pediatrics offices to pharmacies to Samaritan and Sam Care Express, to our school-based and other community health clinics. Boosters wise, across Oregon, just about 29.5% of eligible residents have received a booster dose. We'd really need to see that increase. In Benton County, we're at 32.4%. We, in light of the current events and the CDC booster guidance changing to state that all adults age 18-plus should get a booster, and then adding on that 16- and 17-year-olds can get a Pfizer booster, we held two booster events, primarily booster events, along with Samaritan Health Services and OSU last Wednesday and Thursday. We were there for eight hours each day at the OSU Alumni Center. Our goal was to provide 1,000 doses a day, and in all, more than 3,050 were administered. So that was a very successful event. It really spoke to the demand that is present. If you look at, you know, the figures I stated about Benton County folks boosted, I will say that our boosted numbers will increase modestly in the coming days as data from that, from those events has entered. They were so successful that there's a bit of a backlog in entering information. And OHA announced an initiative to get boosters to 1 million Oregonians by the end of January. We're in conversations with OHA to understand what support is available. And as I understand it, there is support available. We're just working out what the details are. We're also talking with our partners Samaritan Health Services and OSU to plan for rapidly approaching an active January of 2022. We have a week of school and community events planned primarily for pediatric doses, the week of January 9. We'll also have boosters for family members and a limited number of boosters for others, particularly at our rural events, those will be open for drop-in. And we'll also have FEMA joining us at the fairgrounds. Thank you, Lynn McKee, for a large drive-through event, January 31st all the way through February 11th. So that'll be a very helpful long stretch, a little later than we would like. But still, really looking forward to all of these opportunities. One last note, the news with COVID is moving so fast. I want to ensure that you hear that CDC and OHA released a preference for vaccination, it's a clinical preference for the use of the mRNA vaccines, Pfizer and Moderna, over Johnson &amp; Johnson. Now, there are two primary reasons for this preference. While Johnson &amp; Johnson is effective in several important clinical areas, it has prevented fewer COVID hospitalizations, ICU admissions, and deaths than did the mRNA vaccines from Pfizer and Moderna. And second, the J&amp;J vaccine has presented greater risks in select populations than the mRNA vaccines, including thrombocytopenia syndrome, or TTS, which is a clotting, blood clotting syndrome, and Guillain-Barre, which is a syndrome of the neurologic system. So Johnson &amp; Johnson is still a much better choice over no vaccine, given the risks and benefits of vaccination versus infection. And people who want J&amp;J can still receive it as long as they are informed of this recommendation. Some people just simply won't take an mRNA vaccine, so it's important that this option does remain. I think I'll stop there. I could go on with more updates, but this is a lot of information, so I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Thanks.
Thank you. I think the only thing that I would raise is the question that came up for me personally, and that is, when people take their home antigen tests, that data, if you end up registering as a positive, doesn't end up in any of our data. April, can you address that?
Yes, absolutely. So laboratories are required to report tests, negative or positive, and these home antigen tests are an exception because individuals can't be required to report. However, OHA and CDC are working on ways to connect people with positives to their local health departments. It took some conversation to even be able to classify these cases as presumptive positives. That change has happened, but we need to make that connection to the health department. We encourage people who are close contacts that if they have a rapid antigen, that they contact the case investigator. The state is also working on ways to have the, sorry, the CDC is working on ways to have the actual testing companies themselves have some sort of reporting system be put into place. In many of the instructions, you will find that a note about contacting your local health department or your provider is in there, but it does remain an issue. And I do believe that we will have an under-reporting of true positives if people aren't seeking a confirmatory PCR or a test. So people are feeling like they're, especially in areas where we don't have readily available PCR testing, people are feeling like they're on their own and they're going and buying tests. I think that the more that we use these rapid tests, the more a system will fall into place. We will continue to message that if a rapid antigen test is positive, to either go and get a confirmatory test or to call public health. That way, we can provide that wraparound support for people who need isolation and help them with their contact tracing and to be able to identify potentially potential outbreak situations. But it is a problem.
Thank you, April. Appreciate it.
I think she called on me. Morning, April. Really appreciate the updates and thank you, your crew, for this information. It really helps kind of roadmap where we are and trends. I really appreciate that Benton County is towards the top of the list of counties on various metrics. I guess, keep up the good work. And I really appreciate the to-do list. I like meetings where we get homework and this is what we should be doing. And I guess, well, maybe a question on masks. But I think people have gone a little casual on what kind of mask and just wearing it properly. I think I heard something about recommending the N95, the really good mask because of how transmissible the Omicron is. Do I have that correct?
Well, an N95 or a KN95, you know, has the ability to prevent transmission into the mask and out of the mask well, very well, especially relative to some of the cloth masks that may be more gappy around the sides, under your mouth and around your nose. However, I haven't seen a specific recommendation or requirement outside of the healthcare setting to use these masks. We have remained active in fulfilling requests from long-term care facilities who need high-quality PPE in the form of N95s and KN95s. At this time, it hasn't been a community-wide standard. However, I think if, as we walk through the grocery store or see others, we are seeing many more KN95s being used. And it's what I wear.
Okay. That's a good recommendation, April. The last item I have is the county is going to reopen our buildings to the public after the 1st of the year, and I guess I assume that's with your guidance and...
Commissioner Malone, you froze. I think that he's wanting to just double-check our plans to reopen our lobbies and buildings since of January 3rd, to make sure that it was with your guidance.
We absolutely have been in close communication with Joe Kirby and the COVID Executive Committee and others to discuss, you know, the ways to make that reopening. Committee and others to discuss, you know, the ways to make that reopening as, as safe as possible. Joe, did you want to add something there? Or Suzanne?
April, I think you covered it. Commissioners, I would say that based on email dialogue between April, Suzanne and I, we are still expecting to reopen county facilities on January 3rd, county facilities to the public. Obviously, we'll continue to minimize the number of staff in our buildings and take all of the precautions that April mentioned earlier on in her discussion with us. So we are in, in close connection with Suzanne and April. And I would say that at this point, we're still moving forward with reopening and April and Suzanne have been part of that. And April and Suzanne, I'm trying to speak for you. So I think the, my interpretation from our emails is you're still okay with the course of action to reopen to the public at this point. But free to articulate it yourselves if you'd like.
Suzanne, I'd like to give you a chance to speak and then I can make a few comments.
Yeah, I think, yeah, we haven't had a chance to talk in depth since the announcements late last week about the concerns about transmissibility of this new variant. So I am interested here. April's thoughts have changed at all on this topic. My comfort level remains relatively good in terms of opening to the public as long as we are all following all of the safety precautions and protocols that, that April outlined and that we were following previously in our lobbies when we opened. Keeping in mind that some of our operations have never closed, right? Our community health centers, anybody providing direct care to the patient or a consumer or client, as well as being out in the community providing immunization and wraparound supports and harm reduction activities and a number of other county functions, I'm sure that just can't operate without some level of in-person contact. So it's not as if we completely closed everything for any period of time and now some massive reopening is occurring. It's really just reopening lobbies so that people who have difficulty getting a service online, either because it may not be available that way or because they're not comfortable accessing a service that way, have the fullest amount of access that they can have. So trying to balance the need for safety protocols around disease transmission with the many other needs that people may have in the way that they get services from the county. The biggest concern is that we re-message, and we're not bringing like obviously every employee back to the office either. This is just opening to the public. We still have a robust remote work program in place and are still strongly encouraging that to continue as long as we need it to and as long as it's working for people, our employees. I would just caution that among our workforce, we will need to just reinforce our messaging around mask-wearing indoors and what that means. Because early in the pandemic, before there was as much information available about how this virus is transmitted, the thought was that as long as you are in your own cubicle, for example, you don't have to wear a mask. And that has changed. And in fact, the Oregon Administrative Rule clearly indicates that the only place that is an individual workstation where you don't have to wear a mask is if you're in an office that's completely enclosed. It's walls go all the way to the ceiling. You have a door you can shut. So a cubicle area or a large room full of cubicles, no matter how tall the separators might be, is still considered a common area. A mask-wearing is required unless you're just taking a moment to take a bite of food or a drink or something. And I think we need to probably renew that messaging because I, I've observed that some of that older messaging is what is still in people's consciousness. And we obviously know the critical role that mask-wearing can play in our work environment. So with all of those caveats, I'm still comfortable reopening on January 3rd. But April, as our public health administrator, reserves the right to disagree. So that's kind of way in as well.
Thank you. You know, anytime we have a, a new and concerning change, it's, it's required that we evaluate, you know, our, our decisions recent and, and, and prior. And I really think that understanding that this change on January 3rd provides an option for people to enter buildings. But that we will continue to remote work, remote meetings and remote services where possible to, to the greatest extent that we can. It, it does increase, you know, the, it, it does, sorry, I lost my train of thought. It, it does ensure that we are doing the, the best we can in, in that balance of, of needs that we're always faced with. I agree with Suzanne in that we've got to reiterate some of those key messages to staff. I feel like I've been, you know, April Downer and a, and a mask police for the last year. And I, I guess I, I need a, a special badge or something because it'll, it'll continue as long as it needs to because it's imperative, you know, more now than ever that the staff that, that do remain in our buildings follow those safety protocols to the, to the utmost extent possible. Thanks.
We, we can get you whatever you need, April. If it's a badge, we will make it a large shiny one. And just keep giving us the, the good information. That's what counts.
Thank you. We really appreciate the update. Commissioner Wise, any last thoughts, comments or questions before we shift topics?
No, but I see that Gary Stockoff is on. Maybe he has a question or comment?
I just wanted to let you know that through the COVID ambassadors and, you know, and Joe's direction, we have sent notes out, have all the supplies and masks and, you know, done a poll. And so with Paul, we are restocking and making sure that everything's ready for the third when it's open. So on that side, the physical side, we are, we are ahead of the game and most, most of it was already in place. So with that said, thank you.
Thank you for that, Commissioner Wise and Gary. Okay. Moving on then. Thank you very much, April and Suzanne, for silvering news as usual. But may you have a Happy New Year. We will move on to the next item, which is our quarterly update from Ryan Vogt from the Cascade West Council of Governments. Morning, Ryan.
Good morning, Comis-
Good morning, Commissioners, and happy holiday season to all of you. I want to apologize right off the bat because I was not aware Commissioner Malone liked homework assignments. And I didn't prepare any for the Commissioners today, but I will certainly go back and get to work on those. So our next board meeting in January, I'll make sure to have some things for him to bring back to you all. So, good morning. Quick updates. I also have our Veteran Services Officer Manager, Molly Murphy, on with me today. Kind of keeping with the theme of the last conversation here, as you all know, the previous OSHA rules for healthcare providers applied for about half of our agency. About 85 of our 202 employees fell, fell under that initial vaccine mandate. I'm happy to report that as we navigated our way through that, two, I think, incredible things happened. One is, we ended out with 80 of the 85 people getting fully vaccinated. There were several people at the beginning who had not started. So we're at 94% fully vaccinated for the people who fell under that. I'm also happy to report that for the remaining staff, they had an appropriate medical or religious exception. So we lost no staff to the initial wave of vaccine mandates. And that's just a testament to some pretty incredible work, giving nature of people here within their social services arena to step up and make sure that we're doing our part to protect the community and ourselves from, from COVID. And as you can see, I'm in the office right now. And even in the office with closed doors, we require masks at all times as well here in the office. So we're trying to do that. Along the lines of the vaccine updates, the Sixth Circuit Court change in direction on Friday is going to apply to our entire agency. So we are quickly shifting gears to see what this looks like for the remainder of our staff. We had already done some preparatory work, including voluntary disclosure of people's vaccine status and started cataloging that information. So it's not quite as heavy of a lift, but we are planning on ramping up the beginning of next week with lots of messaging and making sure that we're moving forward as we figure out the nuances and the specifics around the testing requirements and what that's going to look like. So we will have more information on that as that goes. I wanted to let you know a little bit about some exciting news here at the COG. As you probably remember, we lost our tech services director back in June, which was not an ideal time to be looking for some of these high, higher-level positions. Like everybody's been struggling with bringing people on board. But we were able to find an incredible candidate. I'm not announcing his name yet. I want to make sure he is physically in our building. But I did get an email from him yesterday. He's been in Southern California for the last couple of years. He is back in town, living here in our region, and he is ready to go. So I will have more news on that from January. But he's going to be an incredible addition to our team. I'm very excited to have this new director on board. He's done small work and he's done big work. He's done, the social work may be a little bit of a new arena for him. But one of his last engagements, he came on to a company where there was, as the tech services director, where there was, the entire company was about 25 people. And within a year or two, that company was up over 2,000 people. And he was successfully able to navigate that type of growth. Now, we are not anticipating that level of growth here at the COG, just so we're all clear about that. We're struggling with our own hiring. But we are planning to have a rapid hiring event in January. So part of our hiring issues, I think, are the complicated process for doing the application and the resume and the cover letter and the, you navigate the systems and all of that. And the last thing we need right now is any additional discouragement for people to come take a look at the exciting careers that we have. So we're going to be doing an event in late January. Information and flyers to come. We've also invited Community Services Consortium to participate if they would like to. Where we're going to have kind of an open house event, allow people to bring in resumes, ask questions of people doing the work and do some one-on-one initial screening or first round interviews right there onsite where we can move people more rapidly through the process of coming on board. I know that the, I believe that you all may have some interest in the current status of the bias incident reporting system. As you will recall, the City of Corvallis quite some time ago set aside some money to be responsive to the community, specifically their community, that was asking for some sort of a response system for bias incidents that don't rise to the level of legal intervention. Through a number of conversations and about a year worth of work, ultimately, that conversation landed at the COG's board for the possible endorsement of looking at a more regional approach to, to engaging the community about what type of system may be appropriate for a bias response system. The board ultimately blessed the COG to move forward with conducting those listening sessions. And last week, we finally got the IGA signed off. And so we are in the process right now of trying to solicit for a contractor to come on board. Now, I want to be clear, the contractor that we're bringing on board right now, we see our role as convening the community. So we are going to be seeking somebody who is an expert in convening, pulling people together, having a conversation, listening, and then deriving data from those conversations. We are, we are open to the possibility that somebody may come to the table who has experience with a bias incident response system. But we're not necessarily actively seeking that because we don't want, quite frankly, somebody's biases around a bias incident response system to taint the process. We want to make sure that whatever it is that's being built is being responsive to what the community is bringing, bringing forward here. And so there will be more to come on that. But we are anticipating in the next month or two, hopefully being able to bring a contractor on board to begin those community meetings. And then finally, from my, from my chair, I wanted to update you on the status of our ongoing partnership with the Community Services Consortium and how it is we're going about trying to deliver services in a more partnered way across the community and looking for ways that we can streamline the way that we navigate this work together since many of our consumers overlap. So Peggy McGuire, their executive director, and I are very close and we really, it, it is helpful that we are of the same mind about let's figure out how we serve the community and then deal with the administrative components later if at some point in time the, the will and the timing seems right for us to be one agency. But for right now, let's figure out how we work together. So we've been having conversations about cohousing staff. We've also been having that, I've also been having that conversation with Department of Human Services, as a matter of fact. But how do we cohouse staff so that we have staff across the board sitting in even more locations throughout the region? Access is something, a barrier that we want to eliminate for people. The last thing we want is somebody to show up at one office and realize they need services and have to go to another office to get it. There's also organic learning that takes place if you're side by side with somebody who has a different experience or different knowledge of service array or a different knowledge of eligibility for services. And so we are working on that cohousing component. We've already, Community Services Consortium has brought some of their physical infrastructure in the way of several servers over to the COG building. Glad to report that that happened without any glitch. We were able to fire up those servers and that was, I think, one of the last components of vacating one of their buildings in the Corvallis area. And so that is one place that we are working together. Also, both agencies have just recently hired new finance service directors. Both agencies have just recently hired new tech services directors. And the culture that we are instilling from day one is your role is bigger than your shop. And so as finance directors and as tech services directors, the expectation is that they are meeting regularly, they're exploring the systems that happen in each agency with the notion that hopefully in six months or so, we can start talking about is there, are one of us better suited, either our policies are better or our workflow is better in one area, and we can start moving that around. So for instance, if one agency is more streamlined and better at doing contracts than another agency, could we, through an IGA, start doing contracts for each other? Or accounts payable, or purchasing, or technology services purchasing? And similarly, from the technology services lens, if either of us is buying a software, we should not just be paying attention to what that looks like or, or buying laptops or buying anything else, not just paying attention to what does that look like for our agency, but always having the end game in mind that it needs to be compatible or it needs to be in sync with what the other agency is doing. And then finally, our plan right now is to invest in a leadership training that will embrace both leadership teams, all of the management for the Community Services Consortium, all of the management for the COG, going through some leadership training together where we are both spending time together as cross-functional teams, but we are also learning and practicing leadership skills and traits together. So the language and the implementation and how we are moving forward as a leadership group happens at the same time. as a leadership group happens at the same time. So very excited about what's on the horizon for our, our joining there. And then I'm going to pause and let Molly jump in and talk a little bit about where we're at with veteran services, and then, of course, I'm open for questions.
Thank you, Ryan. Welcome, Molly.
Hi. So I wanted to talk with you guys today mostly because I changed our report a little bit this quarter. So what you're seeing this quarter more reflects to how I report to the state. And the biggest change is I removed the section that shows the total monies coming into our county versus just new monies coming in from VA awards. I don't know how in-depth you want me to go with this, but I have some issue with how those numbers are calculated, and I can't guarantee that they are accurate at this point. So I don't feel comfortable reporting them out. Ryan and I are going to sit down after the holidays to look at this and try and kind of revamp where those numbers come from. So that's why it looks a little different, and that's why you're not seeing the graph with the big numbers on it this time. All in all, this quarter, we, despite the staffing changes we had, our numbers were still pretty consistent with the previous quarter, so I felt pretty good about that. And ODVA is still working remotely, so our numbers are not being updated in their system as quickly as we would like to see, which is why the new monies coming into the quarter looks a little low, but that will go up when I rerun the numbers next quarter. And the other thing I wanted to highlight was we are starting some in-person appointments with our veterans. We started that the second quarter here in October. We're seeing some veterans on campus at OSU, and then this month, we've seen a few folks in our office to kind of start testing out how, how that's going to look after being closed for, going on two years now. So that's, that's what I have. The last thing I added this quarter was a veteran highlight story. We had a veteran, a World War II veteran who turned 100 in Corvallis. This, this, oh, and Ryan just reminded me that we did have a cold weather gear handout event for our unhoused veterans on Friday. Unfortunately, we took in more donations than we gave out this time, but we are looking at how to make this a ongoing annual event on top of getting the stand down back up and running again. We have a date on the calendar, actually, with the Elks Lodge to get the stand down happening in May this year instead of typically it happens in September. So we're trying to change that to May and then having an annual cold gear event in December. So we're touching folks more than just once a year.
That all sounds great. I'm glad to hear it. Are you all planning on bringing on another veteran service officer or not until your half-time person retires?
We have not talked about this yet. I would like to bring somebody on before she retires so we can kind of get some of that cross-training since she does have 30 years' worth of experience during this job. So my goal would be to have somebody hired before she retires, but we kind of have to play with, play with that this spring.
Okay. Commissioner Malone?
Yeah, Molly, what, you mentioned limited in-person events. What kind of response is, is the remote contact working for most people, or does it seem like there's a kind of a backlog of people that want to talk to you in person?
I would say it's probably like a 60-30% where most people would like to see us in the office. And then we do have a few folks who actually prefer the phone, which is, I was a little bit surprised by that, to be honest with you, but for the most part, everybody's been asking when we're going to be back in the office. So that's why we're trying to look at how we can balance being open and also being safe.
That makes sense, and we're all struggling with that balance. And Mike, and, well, I appreciate the report. It feels like it's been a while, and I wish you well, and it sounds like you've got lots of good things going on. I appreciate the collaborative relationships in the community because you can do much more when you're working with other organizations that support veterans. I just wanted to also call out the Stand By Me program section in the written report and the fact that you all are making good progress there. I am very thrilled to hear that. So thank you. And maybe at a future meeting, we can get a little bit more of a highlight focus on the Stand By Me program.
Chris, you have?
Yeah, I've got a question or two for Ryan. What's the status of the broadband effort? Rachel Maddox Hughes has a four-county effort going, and I think the Cogs involved, and I haven't heard too much about what the Cogs, how the Cogs fits into this effort.
So thank you, Commissioner. In terms of detail information, I'll make sure that I have Director Glass follow up with you, but in short, we had been an active participant in the broadband action team, trying to work through the regional approach. Rachel Maddox Hughes asked us to actually take over the broadband action team, and so our planning group is now leading that work. And, and we just received information that a substantial amount of money has been awarded to Oregon for this effort. So we are hopeful that through that work, we can really earmark a sizable chunk of that for our area. But in terms of the detail of where that is, I'll make sure the Director Glass follows up with you directly.
I would really appreciate that also. We get a lot of inquiries from our local service providers, and having been very active in the broadband action team initially, I have not participated as actively and would love to know what's going on. And I would like to have a coherent county-wide approach at minimum, if not a regional approach to what our priorities are, because otherwise, we could be bringing money around to providers that are ready but that aren't providing the most urgently needed services. So really looking forward to either that engineering feasibility or at least a gaps analysis in terms of services so we can do a better job.
I'll, I'll make sure then to include that report for all three of you.
Thank you. Much appreciated.
Great. Glad to hear about the rapid hire event in January. I really like it when government shows, okay, how we've always done it isn't working, we're going to try something different. And I'm looking forward to what, how that works out. I forget, it was something like UPS or one of the companies that's hiring tens of thousands of people, and they're able to hire some people anyway in 30 minutes. And just because they have such a huge need for bodies that kind of, everybody's upping their, their game, I guess, or trying something different. It could turn out that was a bad idea, but so far, it seems to be working for them. Last thing, really, you mentioned the term cohousing, and I'm, I'm a fan. I was on the Benton Soil and Water Conservation Board when we were having discussions and kind of wistfully, knowing it's a good idea, but just how to move the project forward. And surprise the heck out of me, we got a, well, it's actually Green Belt Land Trust, I think, was the lead, getting a $50,000 grant to do a study on feasibility and maybe who the partner should be. And I think sometime this week, there's a tour of, of the Confluence Building there on Second Street where it's turning into reality and having four or five major tenants. And so I, there's models all over the country, but it's nice to have one close to home. And looking forward to just how that plays out. But appreciate the update on figuring out where, who's best suited for which particular job. And I think that's a, that's a great effort. And I think it probably should be pointed out that sometime in the past, CSC and the Cog were one entity, and for whatever reason, split. And it's nice to get back to, well, we serve the same geography, a lot of the same people. How can we, how can we do a better job? So that's, it's nice to, I appreciate that, that update.
Thank you, Commissioner. I appreciate it. I did have one quick announcement. I think she probably would not appreciate that I'm saying this, but I'm going to do it anyway, and that is, many of you have worked very closely with our finance director, Sue Forty, over the years. She has announced her retirement about two months after I came onboard, and so it has really been a year and a half of, to some extent, her torturing me over the notion that she's going to retire. But the day is upon us. Her last day is going to be January 14th. And of course, she is just beaming, walking around the office, and so it, it's difficult for me, but I know it's going to be great for her. But that's the commissioners and city staff, anybody, or county staff, anybody who's on the call who has interest and has relationship with Sue over the years. We will be trying to put on something in the way of a social distance opportunity for people to swing by, grab a pre-cut piece of cake or something, and wish her well. If you have that relationship with her, that you would be interested and willing to stop by, I would appreciate that. And then our long-term Administrative Services Manager, Ann Johnson, has chosen to follow suit. So she is right behind her with a January 27th. If you know her, then you know she is remarkably low-key and would be very, very embarrassed by having people swing by for her goodbye event. But I still encourage you to do it because embarrassment is one of those things that's just fine for government work. So, but if you have that relationship or if you're willing to drop her a line and thank her for 30 years of service at the Cog, that would be awesome. Happy holidays to you all.
Much appreciated. And happy holidays to you, Ryan and Molly. Okay, I'm going to move us along. We are running 15 minutes behind, and we do have quite a bit left to go, including a public hearing at 11:00, which is a time-certain kind of thing. So without further ado, I'm going to pass it to Rick Crager for the ARPA process presentation, and then we'll have some opportunity for questions and comments.
Thanks so much, Commissioner Ogero. Good morning, commissioners. Great to see you. For the record, Rick Crager, Chief Financial Officer. I will do my best, Commissioner, to ensure that for at least the next two presentations, we try to stay on track and meet your deadline and get you back on your agenda. So today, I'm here to talk about the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, as we've all come to know it. It's kind of funny, as we're time, ARPA is actually the act, which what we're really talking about today is what is called the Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Fund. That is the official name of the dollars that we actually have as a county. But you know, it's always easier just to call it ARPA fund, so that's what we'll stick with for now. If I could ask Teresa to give me the ability to share my screen, and I can start a presentation that will hopefully navigate through a lot of this information, make it easier for you. Okay. Okay, y'all seeing that okay? All right.
Yep.
Excellent. Okay, so I thought where I would start is a little bit of background, just framing this up, make sure that we're all understanding kind of the dollars that we're talking about here. I know this is a little bit of a history lesson for some of you, but just wanted to make sure that we were all tracking. So what we're talking about here today is the 18, almost $18.1 million, giving me the exact amount, that we were awarded back in May of 2021 from the U.S. Treasury. So these dollars have been allocated. They're mostly made available to all state, local, territorial, and tribal governments, primarily in addressing the impacts. So when you look at the act, when you look at the actual award, the dollars are really focused in four, are really primarily for four purposes. First and foremost is really supporting our response, county government, state government's response to decreasing and decreasing the spread of the virus. I think that's one of the primary purposes. A second purpose is really helping to immediately respond and stabilize the economy for households and businesses. That's our second area of focus. The third is addressing public health and economic challenges that have continued to really create inequitable support to, to certain populations. And I think that's something we'll obviously talk a little bit about here as we put money out and how do we really want to focus these dollars. The last area that I think is kind of special, it's important to note, it's replace the lost public revenue, public sector revenues to strengthen, to strengthen support for vital public services. I call this one out because it's got a little bit of a trick to it in that as it relates to these funds, we as a government have to do a calculation. I think you probably heard Mary Ottley talk about this in the past, where we have to go through each and every year and come up with a calculation of how much revenue we as a county have lost because of the impacts of the pandemic. And why this is important is because this calculation really creates a reservation, if you will, that is very, 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 very flexible in terms of the use. It's the one area that as, as we as the county start to prioritize where the most important pieces end, and again, I'll talk about that here shortly, but wanted to really point that out. The next piece is it's just important to make sure that we're tracking is that this is for funds that must be expended by December 31st of 2024. Now, that may seem like a long time away, but this is a lot of money, and it's important to get these dollars mobilized and get them moving to a place where we can get the dollars expended over, over that period of time. So again, just want to make sure that we have all that as, from a background standpoint. So the next piece, I think it's important to know, is that the U.S. Treasury has released what they call interim final rules. This was actually done back in the summer, and the idea of rules are obviously to give us more prescription, more prescriptive uses of dollars, how dollars could be used. Now, these rules are still interim, and I think it's important to always point out that these rules could, at some point, will become final, and they could change. However, the guidance that we have received from the federal government is that until that happens, these are really to be treated as the final rules. And so long as we are following that, as we make our allocations, then we are essentially in compliance. So again, wanted to point that out because it has been sort of a confusion point in terms of the interim rule process. What you see here is really just a little bit more specific to what we just talked about in terms of the purposes. It gets a little bit more prescriptive in terms of, you know, what do we mean by supporting public health expenditures, medical expenses, behavioral healthcare, certain public health, safety staff. So it gets much more prescriptive. Now, what I will say is this is a summation of the rules. If you go into the detail, you will find lots of detail and a lots of flexibility. I've said in many cases with, with all of the dollars that have come through, through all of these federal stimulus that have come through, through all of these federal stimulus bills, these are the most flexible I've ever seen in my career in terms of use. So again, the intent is to give the county, give the state, whatever local jurisdiction is receiving, giving them the broadest flexibility as, as they can, so that we can respond effectively to the pandemic. Couple areas to point out, the fourth bullet there as it relates to premium pay for essential workers. You all know that you have acted on, on that as part of your employee recognition pay that was approved back in October. So again, there are specific areas that they did get more detailed within the interim rules that gives us more guidance as we move forward. So to kind of summarize where we have been as it relates to you all, so one of my first meeting with all of you was on October 12 of 2021, where we had a discussion in a goal-setting work session. And there were several steps that we took as it relates to these ARPA dollars. First was you reviewed and approved a preliminary plan for county-sponsored projects. You might recall, again, back to that, appropriate use of, using dollars to replace government revenues. This was where we looked at a list of countywide projects, of which I have provided for you in a little bit more updated estimate. One of the things that you had requested was us to continue to work those projects and get to a final estimate. At this point, we have estimated those at approximately $10.2 million. Still continuing to work through those, there will probably be some further refinement as we get into more detail. But that's where we're at is in relation to those county-sponsored projects. The other thing that you approved, and very much thankful for this, you approved half a million dollars of the ARPA dollars to address administrative needs and particularly a grant coordinator, which will very much be helpful to me as we start moving this forward into execution administration of all of these dollars. The other piece that you requested of staff was to begin to design a process in which the balance of the ARPA funds, which we're estimating right now is about 7.9 million, could be made available over the course of the next three years for what I call competitive applications from governmental, community-based, and nonprofit organizations. So one of the things that you talked about in October was, can we design a process to where we stretch the dollars over the course of the time period, but also be able to put it out for applications from a wide array of community organizations, could be government, could be nonprofit, to be able to respond to specific needs. And then try to identify that, the hope was to be able to put that out in January 2022. So what I'm presenting to you today, and we'll be talking a little bit about, is what that process looks like, trying to reach that January goal that you have, but to really be able to create the best product possible that you can be proud of and that we can go out and get the best results possible for the community. The last thing that you really talked about was, as we start looking at this process, to try to create a prioritization of funds that's based on, one, the 2040 Thriving Community Initiative. I think that was pointed out. And then also really thinking about how the US Treasury has started to come out and identify specific uses. So those were kind of the, the elements that we were following as it relates to, to your direction from the October meeting. So I'll start with sort of a summary, and then we'll drill down here a little bit. So right now, this is what I'm proposing as kind of the key timeframes of putting out this, this money in, in January. So first is today, obviously presenting to you a proposed plan and a draft notice of funding opportunity. Again, I want to be really, really clear that this is draft. So we're working today to get input from you. We're hoping to get more input. As you can see, the January 4th, I'd like to have some directions, some discussion from you around getting more feedback from our community stakeholders. We've already had some of that. I know Joe and myself have met with Helen Higgins and some of her colleagues over this last month, and being able to get good feedback. So how do I get as good a feedback as possible? Would love some advice from all of you on, in relation to this draft NOFA. And then my target is to be able to present to you at your goal-setting meeting on January 11, a final product, a final NOFA, which will have all of the potential adjustments from our feedback sessions. And also be able to spend some time about what does a review committee need to look like? Because I think that's going to be an important element as we move forward, is who's the best group to use, what's the expertise to get us the best projects possible and review the applications. I'm all, I'm aiming right now for a January 14 opening of applications. You all remember the tool that Jen presented to you. Through this draft NOFA, we will get that tool all nice and framed up and ready to, to roll come January 14. But again, this, getting the NOFA completed and getting the elements to that put in place so that we can use the tool for that process. And that would lead to about a three-week process. And again, just know, this is all drafts, so you all have free to, you know, let me know, hey, three weeks, Rick, isn't enough? Is it too long? Is it too much? Those are the kind of things I would love to hear. But as of right now, I'm proposing a three-week process, which would give us about another three weeks to actually review those applications with our committee, and then come before you on March 1st for recommendations for funding so that we can begin executions by, execution of agreements by March 15. So that's a relatively aggressive timeframe, but I think it is doable. And again, but am open to your feedback as we, as we move through this. So let me kind of dive into now the NOFA, which again, I gave you a copy of that draft agreement, but this is hopefully to, to help sort of sum up some of the key elements of that for you to be thinking about. So first, it would be, as we talked about, available to governmental, community-based, and nonprofit organizations. So again, I think you were all pretty clear in your October meeting that you wanted this to be open to all. You wanted to, to make sure that you had opportunities to hear from all organizations in the community about how best to hit your priorities. The next piece is that I'm proposing $2.6 million to be allocated in January. No real magic to that, other than taking 7.9 divided by three. So I'm essentially taking the remaining dollars after all the county-sponsored projects. We talked about trying to spread that out over the course of three years. And so the idea would be, this would be the first of different process, three different processes over the course of the next several years. This next piece, again, would love some feedback. This is, you know, I, I kind of went back and forth, looked at different types of state RFOs that have gone out. I've looked at different types of county ARPA requests for applications process. There's really not anything consistent, but I put out there a maximum $500 grants. Again, would love some feedback. I started thinking about, you know, obviously, it could be less than that, but, but clearly there could be projects, particularly when we look at some of our priorities, that could be more expensive when we start talking about things like housing and homelessness. I mean, those things can be costly, and we want to be able to give as much resources as possible. But again, would love your feedback on, on what you think in relation to that being a maximum now. This next piece is, all applicants must provide assurance that funds will be spent in accordance to federal eligible uses and be used to respond to public health emergency or, or its negative economic impacts. I know that sounds pretty basic, that sort of like, well, yeah, that's common sense. We want to make sure that they're in the federal eligible purposes. But, but again, I think there's a key piece in here that the idea of these dollars is, we are responding to priorities that are a result of the public emergency. What has the public health crisis? What has it created? What situations has it created in our community? And how are these monies going towards it? So again, a bit of a nuance there, but I think it's important that we make sure that there's understanding around this. A next piece that I think is, it's important to everyone is to, each applicant needs to demonstrate, demonstrating their proposal that they're addressing at least one or more of the values that have been put in the 2040 Thriving Community Initiative. And we'll talk about priorities here in a moment. I think that the, the four values are good framing as it relates to a process, but obviously, the priority sinks into a little bit more specific, and that will be some of the areas that we'll need to address as well. But we want to be able to see that people are understanding there's a connection between the values that the community has put forward and, and the priorities that are being established through this process. Next piece, I think is, is I put out there as, as a recommendation to you, I think it's important that we demonstrate that organizations actually have the capacity to deliver. And, you know, how do you find that out? Usually is that it is based on experience. Do you have organizations that are coming to the table that have experience in providing this kind of services? Have they been successful in getting results? Again, you want to make sure that we're making a good investment and that we're going to get the return that you're all looking for. And then finally, this again, is an area I'd love to have some feedback. I think the idea of these dollars, and I've, you know, again, as I've told Joe so many times, I'm probably a little bit, coming from the schools where I've seen a lot of money that's gone out that has continued to sit. I think the idea of these dollars is to put it to work. We really want to be responsive. And so part of this process is, again, we'll be putting these out every year. So we're asking for this to be a one-year grant, and that essentially the dollars be obligated by September 30, meaning that commitments be made, projects underway, and then expend within 12 months from the grant award. So again, and if the dollars are left, then we could roll those over into the next round for another process moving forward. So that's kind of the, the thinking as it relates to the summary. So let me move into now the next level down, priorities. So this is where we start to really get into, where do we want the dollars to go to work? And so again, Commissioners, I, you know, I've tried to do a lot of listening. I tried to do a lot of reading. I tried to really think of the US Treasury, kind of where they are focusing dollars, what are some of the priorities there. I've looked at the strategic plan that you've all set, which is part of the budget. Obviously looked at the, the values. And these are the areas that I have been able to pull out by looking at a lot of the US Treasury that I think really hit some of the, some of the areas. Now, again, I can read all these to you specifically, but I think for me, the themes really come in four areas that I tried to focus on. Number one, we hear a lot from the US Treasury, and you can see throughout, there's about supporting small business. Small businesses have been hurt by the pandemic, and what are the things that we can put in place to really respond to the impacts on small business? I think that the next area that we're seeing a lot in the US Treasury, and we're seeing across the nation as it relates to these ARPA processes, is affordable housing and addressing the homeless population. I think Commissioner Orgero, you were very kind to send me what I believe, I think it's the City of Van or the County of Deschutes has done. They've made a significant investment as it relates to the homeless population, using their ARPA dollars for that as well. So I think that's another key element that I tried to pull out in this. Health and social, social care, so that's, that's pretty broad, and you'll see this kind of the flavor throughout. Obviously, programs or services that facilitate access to health and social services, that can be very broad. Another area that, and I know in our conversation with Helen, and hopefully she, she can appreciate this as well, programs or services that address or mitigate the impacts of COVID-19 on public health emergency, on education, or, or that promote healthy childhood environment. So trying to think about the, the impacts that we have seen across the board as it relates to children, to our education system, to childcare. So this would be an area that I had called out specifically as well. And then I think the last piece to this is, and this really comes out in your core values, is equity. And, and we're seeing that clearly, putting these dollars to those that have been impacted negatively by the pandemic and have seen disparate impacts. And so how do we really put the dollars out to recognize equity, to really ensure that we're putting the dollars to the places and to the families and to the, to the individuals that have been impacted the most? So that's kind of the flavor, if you will. Again, the, the language here is really trying to narrow this into seven priorities that you could put out there that the community could really get, you know, hang their hat on, really get their heads around. I believe, I, at least I, I feel like it's a, a good first step in trying to get some of those, the themes that we have heard from the community, that I've heard from you, that we've seen in a lot of our literature. But again, this would be the area that we would definitely want to get as much feedback as possible between now and January 4th, to make sure that we got the words right, and that we're really aiming the dollars the way that we want to. So I actually messed up here on my slideshow, so I'm going to skip a little bit here. The other piece is evaluation criteria. And again, as I shared with Joe, I kind of called upon some of my, my former experience, particularly with education and looking at a lot of the RFAs that we have done, and trying to develop a criterion. And there will be a lot, I should say, a lot more detail to this. Clearly, this is more of the summary of the criterion, and we would need a matrix to help us as activity on how best to evaluate it. But really, six main areas. Number one, justification. And I think it's important that we ask the proposals to justify that, you know, what they're putting the money into. What is the data? What is the information that is suggesting that we need to put into this investment? I think that's an important piece and has carried 15% of the weight. The next two items carry 50% of the, the total proposal. And I think that they're ones that I believe that, you know, at least listening to you all, and really looking at some of the information that I've seen through the US Treasury, is areas that they really are looking for focus. So number one is, how are they, how are they hitting our priorities? So those areas that we just talked about, we really want clear information on, not only how are they hitting the priority, but how do they demonstrate the values of the 2040 Thriving Community Initiative? So that would be a, a pretty high-scoring area. The next one is community impact. And I think this is the one where I would be, as a, as a reviewer, looking for, you know, describing clearly, what is the, the, the significant impact you're trying to address in this? And how is it measurable? So what are we really trying to focus on here? And this would be the, the place that I would be looking for, clear understanding of how you're impacting disproportionate populations, how you're really putting on equity lens in relation to hitting that. So again, that, that I think is an important element. The next three areas, I think all, all of these are obviously important, but have a little bit lesser weight, organizational capacity, which we've already talked about. Can they demonstrate that they have the ability and have had a success in overseeing these type of proposals? Obviously, clarity quality of proposal is an area that we won't want to see, that they're really being able to distinguish between the goals and the activities. And then finally, is it a reasonable budget? I mean, being able to look at it from a financial standpoint. So I'll go backwards now in terms of next steps. So for, for me, what, what we're looking for is, like to get your assessment of what you've seen, what you've heard here. Are we on the right track? What are the things that concern you? What are the things that you could see adjusted? Would like to solicit feedback from various community stakeholders between now and January 4th. I'd love your advice on that in terms of the best approach. I think that's important to get that feedback so that we can build a NOFA that makes sense for the community. Based on that, I'd like to be able to come back to you and redraft that NOFA to, to make sure we're hitting those and be able to bring that back to you on January 11. That's what I'm aiming for. And then be able to, to start thinking about the committee. So that's, that's it in a nutshell, Commissioners. Again, wanted to just provide you some context to all of this and would be open and love to get your feedback.
Thank you, Rick. I think that it's really logical and clear framework and process, and I appreciate that immensely, and the clarity with you and your team that put this together. I would like to give my fellow Commissioners an opportunity to comment and ask questions. And then I will ask for any public comment and try and keep us on track as well. So Pat, Nancy?
Yeah, great job, Rick. I really appreciate the organization and working on setting priorities. I've been uncomfortable for the last few months. We have this money and, and kind of piecemeal tasks for some of those dollars. And this is a great start. I wrote this down before you used the word, this is an aggressive timetable. And I'm with the holidays and saying, have a pretty good uh, I'm, um, with the holidays and, and saying, uh, have a pretty good shape of the, uh, direction to, to, uh, go by, was it on January 4th, which, um, sounds like it's a ways off, but, uh, with the holidays, anyway, a little bit concerned about the, at, at least the, the start of, uh, the timetable there, but, uh, we'll, we'll give it our best, uh, best shot. And, and this comes from, I think it was spring of 2020 and we had some, uh, fairly limited funds to, uh, help small business and, and Kate Portia and her crew helped, uh, design a, a fairly thoughtful process for distributing, um, money to, uh, our, our small businesses that were just getting hammered, uh, with, uh, with the initial wave of COVID. And one thought that, uh, came out of that was, um, the larger businesses, in this case, might be nonprofits, uh, are, um, savvy and, uh, ready to go. And I think, um, we need to, you know, keep in mind the, the, the smaller organizations, businesses that, uh, mom and pop type, uh, organizations for lack of a better term, uh, and, and make sure that they're, uh, they're aware of, uh, this, this process and this timetable and, uh, uh, so that we kind of, uh, spread the dollars, uh, maybe to rural areas or, uh, um, smaller organizations. So, but, uh, I, I really appreciate the effort that, that went into this and this is, this is more clarity than I was hoping for at, at this point of, uh, timetable. And, uh, I, I appreciate, uh, where was that? Just, uh, talking about, uh, the interim final rule. That's, that sounds dangerous, but, uh, uh, thanks for explaining that. Hopefully, uh, the information that we have currently will, uh, be the rules, uh, when we spend the money and then six months from now we get the final rules and, uh, but, but the, we're okay for, uh, proceeding with the, the best information that, that we had. So, uh, I, I appreciate that reassurance.
Thank you, Commissioner. And that's clearly something that, uh, as a financial person and a compliance person, I always want to make sure we, we don't want to get tagged with a, a federal finding down the road and not following the rules. And so definitely it's been crystal clear and I think actually Joe was recently at a conference where he shared some information where he'd heard something about that as well. And I think there's a lot of concern across, across the nation. Commissioners, one other thing I failed to mention, um, in, in your original packet around the plan, I did also provide you a summary of those, uh, county projects. I mentioned the 10.2 million. So I just wanted to let you know that's been framed up a little bit more, but it's, 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 we're building the house as we go here, but we're getting, getting a little bit more specifics to that. So that'll get better and better, but I, I failed to mention that to you as you're looking at, you know, one side of this has the RF, the NOFA process that would go on January, there's also the other side of this process, which is all those county sponsored projects. So I didn't want to forget that. I apologize.
Thank you, um, for that reminder. And I know that, uh, we talked about those internal projects also going through the same, um, proposal tool. So there will be transparency and people can see into that aspect of our funding as well. Um, Commissioner White?
Thank you. A comment and a question just, uh, has along the lines of what has already been said. Um, I completely agree that this is just very logical and clear. Um, it's a great framework. It hits all of the major points. I really appreciate that. You've been hard at work, you and your team, so thank you for all this. It's great. Um, and then you kind of, I think you, we just touched on this, but my question was, you know, with these interim final rules, you know, is there a possibility of us awarding some money and then the rules change? And then what do we do? I mean, I don't know how likely that is, but is it possible? And then what would we do?
Yeah, great question, Commissioner White. Really appreciate that. That was actually one of the things I went out to, to look at because I had the same question myself. And so the way that they're, uh, advising us is that to the extent that a jurisdiction has made a funding commitment, then that will continue to follow. So let's just say that, I don't know, hypothetically say you can't use money for serving for affordable housing. I'll just, I know that won't happen, but let's just say that. And there was a project that we did, even though it came after we, so long as we awarded that before the final rule changed, we were okay. So that's what they'll look at is not the expenditure period, but the obligation period. So that will be the key.
Okay, that's great. Thank you.
And I also, also should say in terms of the aggressive timeframe that Commissioner Malone brought up, you know, I always joke with Joe, you know, he, he told me when I took this job that I needed to put my running shoes on. And so I took him for his word. So I've been trying to run since, uh, since he's hired me, but I, I blame him.
I've got a, a follow-up. Uh, well, well, one thing, you know, thank you for, uh, for your efforts and paying attention. We've gotten a, a number of, uh, kind of online seminars, learn all about ARPA dollars and how to do it. Uh, well, hopefully, uh, Rick's doing that, Rick and his team. So, uh, cause it, it seemed like, uh, a, a lot of time and, and maybe not, uh, where I should be spending my time. Uh, last question, uh, there's the infrastructure bill, uh, that's, that's passed and maybe other, uh, federal money coming our way. Uh, I guess, uh, how do we coordinate where the best, uh, uh, best pot of money to, to use for a particular, uh, project and, uh, you know, protecting our, our, I guess, protecting our ARPA dollars if, uh, other funding is, uh, has become available?
Yeah, great, great question and obviously still a lot to, uh, understand as it relates to the infrastructure bill in terms of the, the resources and where things will go. I think, uh, one of the things, and I believe I shared, shared this perhaps with Commissioner Ogierro, what I'm hearing about the infrastructure bill is, um, that we need to make sure as jurisdictions that we have shovel-ready projects. In other words, you know, projects that have been through design and are just awaiting funding. So one of the things that, you know, just as an idea and can, you know, continue to maybe be a potential, uh, application perhaps is how do we prepare for that? How do we get projects to the place of readiness so that when the infrastructure bill does come out, we are best prepared? Because, um, I think that's going to be, that, that if we want to get money, we're going to have to show readiness for all of the projects that can go forward. So that might be a good thought as it relates to preparation for this is do we put money into getting a lot of these projects ready to go? So that come May, cause I think it's going to be April or May, uh, when those, when those monies get released, how do we best utilize those? But I, I think that that's a great point, Commissioner, that we need to be thoughtful of all the, all the various resources.
Thank you. I would like to make just one quick point before, um, ask for any public comment and that is, um, I, I like the criteria, the evaluation criteria, but I, I do know that sometimes criteria like organizational capacity and, uh, clarity or quality of proposal can weed out those that come from culturally specific organizations or organizations that, um, that play a minor role, but don't have as much capacity as Commissioner Malone mentioned, some of the smaller shops. So, um, I, I just want to be cognizant of that. I, I don't think these criteria are wrong, uh, but, um, we just need to be aware of, uh, the differential, um, capacity of some of our organizations. That said, I want to make sure that we don't sprinkle these resources and that we do actually fund things that make a difference. So, um, to your question about the, the size of the award and the maximum size being 500,000, I'm comfortable with that. Um, and, um, so we need to probably, uh, as we appoint the evaluation, the group, um, be comfortable about some of the trade-offs that we might be making in terms of the number of grants, um, versus the potential impact of the grants. Um, so that, because that's never simple. And to go back to Commissioner Malone's comment also, that balance of, um, rural and urban and, uh, representing all of our communities. I see there's a question from Helen, but I think, um, the total to be designated is 2.6 million in this round.
So I put a, a chat in there, uh, put a response in. So 2.6 million is what we would be awarding for this proposal. And then as I said, we, we have 7.9 in total that is unallocated at this point, but based on, you know, what you've all talked about, we would spread that over the course of three years so that we have more future funding rounds. Hope that helps Helen.
Are there any other members of the public who have a brief question or comment at this time? And put, and I would like you to, um, let us know if that January 4th comment date on process is adequate given the holidays. Um, I recognize that, um, there are only a select group of folks from the nonprofit community here, but, um, your views would be welcome on that, um, timeline. Um, I, if you can put your name in the chat first, great, but Helen, go for it. And I see that, um, I think it's, it's Carrie that's speaking from process. I don't know. Go ahead, Helen.
Okay, yeah. So Rick, I just really want to thank you. I think it's a really solid process. Appreciate you listening to our, our gang for good and working those pieces in there. Um, I, as far as it's been, your question on timing, you know, we're, we're kind of used to those tight deadlines and, you know, we know the work that needs to be done across the counties to the populations that are most at risk, um, due to the pandemic. So, you know, I believe that we can make that happen and also appreciate the, uh, comment about not doing a peanut butter spread because that just gets really ineffective. So, you know, having a nice big size to help quack for some of these issues is, is just right on. So you guys are really fortunate to have Rick in the county. I can totally see his Department of Education experience shining through. So anyway, just wanted to thank and appreciate the great work.
Thank you. I would like to acknowledge Johan has turned on his camera, please, Johan. And then I will, um, ask if Carrie or Ben want to say a word.
Thank you. Um, I think this is a great proposal, our timeline and everything, um, but I do worry that it is a little fast, especially if the holidays, um, so if possible, some more time would be good, I think, for some organizations that are maybe very newer or don't have as much staffing available for them to be able to get that. But less so on the time for them to inform us, but more for the timeline on them actually applying. I think that might need additional time as well. Um, and I'd also recommend some type of like workshop or something to help, uh, organizations apply for that so they know exactly what you all are looking for, um, just to give them a fair chance, especially for organizations, um, run by or focused on marginalized populations. Um, we already know that there's lots of systems that are barriers to applying for these resources. Um, so anything we can do to help mitigate that, I think would be really helpful and help try to make the plane feel as equal as possible as they apply. Um, and if there's even rolling deadlines or anything else for other changes as need be, if we don't spend all the money, I think that would be good for anybody else who maybe doesn't reach the original deadline, because they just might not need it now, but might find that they need that later.
Thank you, Johan. And I'm sorry, I don't remember Carrie, Carrie, how you pronounce your name, so please let us know.
That's all right. Thank you. Uh, it, it's Carrie, but, um, I've grown up with it being both for, you know, my entire life, so, um, I respond to both. Thank you so much for the time. Um, I, and I want to, um, reiterate and, and support what Helen said as well as what Ben said in the chat, but I think Johan, um, definitely said it best. For small organizations, uh, the timeline is extremely tight. Um, that's only, you know, really giving us, um, a short period of time to be able to respond as well as to even do the, the applications, um, and things. So I, even, even a week push, um, while I believe the money needs to go out and so that we can definitely make an impact, um, to, to the work that's being done or needs to be done, um, is critical. I don't know that pushing it a week or week and a half is going to be, make that much of a difference, but it will definitely give us the time, um, because we're all crazy busy, especially over the holidays. Um, we definitely see an increase in the needs within our community, um, and trying to respond to those is, is difficult at best, but then to have this type of deadlines on us is, is definitely, um, going to make a huge difference for our ability to do it in a thoughtful and, um, in the best way possible to support the work that's being done, um, by, by all of you. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Carrie. So just to clarify, if we add time, is it more important to add time to, um, comment on the process or to, um, actually do a thoughtful proposal, put together a thoughtful proposal?
I think it's for the input, but I also think it's, um, important, um, most definitely for the input, I think is, is the most critical. Um, as far as the, uh, the, the other process, I think it depends on how difficult it is and what the application looks like and some of the other pieces that all come together. Um, and so that's what, um, will really make the difference as far as timeline for the, the resulting and when the applications are, uh, is, is due for all of us. So I think making sure it's thoughtful, um, it isn't extremely time consuming, but it meets the needs of all of you to ensure that we're expending the money appropriately, the projects are needed within our community and allowing you time to do the assessment, um, of all the different grants is critical. Did I answer your question?
Thank you. Uh, I think you said both, uh, another week on both would be wonderful. A week, another week for comments on the process and another week for writing the proposal.
That would be.
So I, I would agree that, that, that would probably be optimal.
Commissioner, just as a, as a proposal, uh, January, like we could push to, to January 11th, uh, from the January 4th date, that would give us, uh, again, my intent is still to get started, uh, here, um, tomorrow, uh, next week to start reaching out, uh, you know, get out as much information, get this information out to the public so they can give us feedback, but we could push it one week. Uh, that gives us the January 11th and then we could talk about getting back to you with the, the, the redraft NOFA, maybe, maybe the week of the 17th of January, uh, might, might work. And, um, we'll have to talk to Joe about that. I have a, a little bit of a conflict that particular week, but we can wait, we can certainly work through that and, uh, be able to make it work. Um, and then that, that probably puts us about a week behind. And then I think what we can also do is ask feedback from the community partners between now and January 11th is three weeks enough time. Uh, you know, that's, that's what I, as I said before, that's, that's what I'm used to, but hey, maybe we need four weeks, maybe it's five weeks, but obviously the further we push it out, the, the longer we, until the money goes to work. So, um, but that could be a feedback question that I can pose to the, the community partners.
Thank you. Anne from Jackson Street, um, you, Sophie.
Hi. Uh, yes, Anne, Creighton, Jackson Street Youth Services. And I, I, I really just wanted to say, um, I'm impressed and thankful for what I'm hearing today and, um, I really appreciate, uh, Rick, all the things that you said. I think, um, yeah, I think, I think there is a concern of particularly making sure that some, some organizations, um, uh, that might not have the some organizations that might not have the bandwidth that are given the chance. But I also really appreciate the fact that you understand the urgency to get the money to those in need and get the money working for us. So I just really wanted to say thank you.
Thank you, Anne. Okay, unless there are other comments, I'd like to wrap this up so that we can give Rick and his team just a little bit of time to address our other agenda item before our public hearing. So moving on to item 4.4, discussion of the 2019-22 financial report and end of biennium.
Thanks, Commissioner, and I'm going to invite Jen. She's, I always like to say the real brains behind the operations here, but I'll tee this up a little bit. So Commissioner, I think the good news is, you know, you've seen this once already in a pre-meeting, so you won't have hopefully too many surprise on that. So that might aid Jen in being able to move this through and keep you guys back on track. The one thing I did want to say though, Commissioner, is that, Commissioners, is that Jen will be approaching this from the old format, but I wanted you all to know all the feedback that you've given me and we will work going forward into this biennium to make sure you have a, perhaps a modified, different reporting structure in the future. So I just wanted you all to know that we're still following the same outline as the past, but you didn't go unheard. We will be changing that up to better meet your needs going forward. But hopefully this will be easy on you since, like I said, you already got a bit of preview. So with that, I will let Jen take it away.
Good morning, Commissioners. To echo Rick's sentiment, things are going to change and we're looking forward to making that change, but we have to use what we have currently. I would also like to state that we're going to do something a little different than previous since there was a request for a better comparison of, let's say, apples to apples in terms of the revenues and expenditures comparing 1921 to, for example, 1719. So unfortunately, it's not a presentation per se. I'm going to be talking a little more than I normally would like without having graphics to show you, but I hope that we can answer some of those questions that you had previously and I can do so in the next 12 minutes and get us on our way. So just the first thing is the general fund and the local option levy. In trying to compare the revenue piece from 1719 to the 1921 biennium, I tried to remove those known one-time anomalies. So for example, in this comparison, I've removed COVID funds from the 1921 numbers because we didn't have them in 1719. And at that point, once I had done that, taken out all the transfer revenues and the restricted and unrestricted balances, because we simply want to look at operating revenues, there was 4% growth over the prior biennium. This is driven primarily by higher than budgeted assessed values for property taxes. Unfortunately, transient lodging tax did come in a little lower than anticipated because again, COVID. However, our state shared taxes remain stable due to the liquor taxes and the marijuana taxes. Those actually remained high during COVID lockdown, not unsurprisingly. On the expenditure side of the general fund and the local option levy, there was 7% growth in expenditures over the prior biennium. I removed all of the known COVID expenses and I also made the assumption that all of the money was expended. While we know that is not necessarily always the case, to compare apples to apples, I just pulled out expenditures. I also removed the one-time payment for the per-site account, which was $5 million because that makes a difference. And then the, I think it was 1.2 million invested in JSIP initially. And so pulling that out, we have 7% growth. What that tells us is unfortunately expenditures grew a little faster than our revenues, but we did have a healthy balance to take care of that. In the road fund, we had 8% growth in revenue over the prior biennium and 8% growth in expenditures. So that one kind of stayed in line. The growth in the revenue is driven by the state shared fuel and registration taxes. And then the capital grant funding was a little less than anticipated and what I would normally expect, but that is because less projects were completed due to COVID and they are reimbursable grants. Within the other funds category, which contains a number of funds, and I want to make sure I get them all for you, let's see, we have the county school fund, the fair fund, technically that would be where the ARPA fund is housed, the land corner preservation, the special grant fund, the Oregon Health Plan Fund, the court security fund, the Title III Land Forest Fund, Special Transportation Fund, and then the debt service, and then the two capital funds, the general capital improvements and the building development reserve. In order to compare everything there, I removed the ARPA funding, the building development reserve, the STIF funding, so House Bill 217, because that was an addition in 1921 that was not in 1719. And the Oregon Health Plan Fund was also taken out for comparison purposes because we aren't using that fund in the same capacity and we're trying to do subset that. Given all of those things, there was 5% growth in revenue in all those funds over the prior biennium. And on the flip side of that, removing all the same factors on the expenditure side, there was a 1% decrease in expenditures over the prior biennium. Primarily, that is driven by materials and services being down in the fair fund because of COVID. Less funding in the county school fund was passed through. And then also, the STF fund was lower. And then there is an offset in all these funds by an increase in the special grant fund. I think at this time, I'm going to run out of time, but I think one thing that is important to talk about is the Special Transportation Fund. Rick and I had talked to you previously about making a commitment of possibly, possible known hiccups in the road, to put it, you know, most mildly. Special Transportation Fund has been on my, what I consider my watch status for the 1921 biennium. There have been conversations with Gary and Joe and Brad and Lisa with the City of Corvallis, so it's not an unknown or a surprise. I think the important thing to point out is that in the 1921 biennium, the operating revenues versus expenditures were in a deficit. So we spent a little over 204,000 more than we collected, which then ate into the restricted balance and shows a large, essentially a cliff, a decline in fund balance. So in 1719, there was a balance of $144,000 to just ballpark it. With this overage in expense to revenue, their beginning balance in that program was at negative 60,500. In this case, that particular fund is saved by the balance of the STIF funding within that fund. So the fund itself is not in a negative status, just the program had a decline in fund balance, started out in the negative going forward into 2123. And I know that Gary, Rick, Joe, everyone is well aware and having meetings about that, but I do want to make sure that we are keeping our promise to call attention to those things that might need some further consideration. That being said, the other big one that I would have to talk about is fleet services. That is the other program that's considered on the watch status. There have been a lot of changes. We've, you know, split the internal and the external into the appropriate funds as is required by accounting practice. The, for 1921, there was a total program loss between internal and external of about $761,000. There was a beginning balance to offset a piece of that loss of approximately $475,000. Consequently, the external side ended up with negative $465,000 beginning balance. The internal side is in at about $179,000. So combined, there's a surplus, but when you divide the parts out, that is not necessarily the case. But on the flip side of this, I would also like to add, this is known, there are meetings taking place. Rick is scheduling some sit-downs so we can go over, you know, what is the best methodology for splitting the expenditures between the internal and external? Can we do it better? We're looking at our process to see if we can improve on this and tighten that up going forward. I don't know if, Rick, you want to add anything to that at the moment?
No, thanks, Jen, and just cognizant of the Commissioner's time, I won't go into great depth, but I do know that this is an area that, you know, Joe and I talked a lot about this, really trying to make sure that we're, we're looking at the cost allocation between internal, external fleet and really being able to get good cost methodology in place. Both Gary and I are strong partners on this and we're going to work forward as we begin in the month of January to get that right. So more to come on that at a later time. Thanks, Jen.
Just one other quick thing, most of the other funds are as expected. Health clinic, there's a revenue growth of 11%, expenditures at 17. So there's a little dynamic. We prefer it to be 11 and 11 or 17 and 17, but definitely factors play into that. I would point out that the East Lynn Clinic have eaten into their restricted balance a little bit. Their operating expenditures did receive what they brought in in revenues by about $261,000. They did have restricted balance that offset that, so there are no way in the negative, just something we need to keep an eye on going forward to make sure it stays that way. Everything else is pretty much as anticipated and nothing of great concern at this time. And I have probably 30 seconds to spare, if you have any questions.
Okay, I really appreciate your listening to our feedback and providing this type of report that really highlights the key issues of concern. So look forward to seeing the modified printed form and being able to share that with our communities as well, you know, as we've spoken about before, trying to highlight the understandability and the transparency of our financial situation to all concerned. So overall, good bill of health, got some work to figure out. So we'll do that. Any questions from Commissioner Wise or Commissioner Malone, recognizing that we do need to shift into public hearing mode momentarily?
Just supporting the idea of being able to compare apples to apples. I appreciate that, Jen, looking forward to seeing the new improved finance report. And I would be remiss if I didn't point out that the liquor and marijuana tax came in high. Is that okay? Thank you. We have to have something to look forward to in your reports, Jen.
I'm glad that was the case.
Okay, any other questions or comments for Jen on the financial report? Okay, with that, I am going to move us along into the public hearing and will return to the consent calendar after we hold the public hearing. The public hearing is in a matter of adopting resolution R 2021-026, amending supplemental budget number 22061. And so I will open the public hearing and welcome staffer Jen Ambul back to the stand to give us the background.
Hello again, not that I went anywhere. So we are here for supplemental budget 22061. Within that, we are hitting five funds that need amendments. As discussed previously, if you're following along in the supplemental budget packet, I suggest you just start on page four. There are a lot of complicated ins and outs and movements with this one, so it's a little tricky to follow and explain even for myself who is hands-on in it. So first up is the general fund. We are reducing the materials and supplies in Program 10, General Government Operations of 1,125,000. Consequently, we are then taking that 1.125 million and increasing it in the transfer fund and we are transferring those to Fund 514. This would be the movement of CARES and FEMA reimbursed payroll costs to Fund 514, to Fund Phase Two of the Kalapulua Building remodel. Division 12 Patrol and Investigation, there was an increase in appropriation authority in materials and services for a radio infrastructure assessment and improvement plan for responder agencies within the area. The Patrol and Investigation Division did receive a grant award from Homeland Security and this was applied for and received after budget adoption. And so within the professional services line item in materials and services, there is an increase of $80,913. And then the same increase you will find in operating grants and contributions on the revenue side. Within Public Health Services Division, we are doing a couple of things. One, we are establishing a restricted beginning balance in the amount of $2,133,493. And this would be due to carryover of unspent COVID funds from the 1921 biennium. This particular cost center doesn't normally carry a fund balance, but due to the restricted nature of the funds, we are establishing it for this biennium with the intent that COVID will end and we'll get no more COVID funding and it will go away going forward. I have high hopes. We also are increasing the operating grants revenue, $170,812. This would be additional funding for the 2123 biennium received within that same program. On the expenditure side, personal services is increased $2,084,305 for staff that were previously paid by FEMA funding for the remainder of the biennium. And then also materials and services category totals are increased $220,000 to pay for materials and services for COVID testing and other miscellaneous supplies. Within the District Attorney's Division, we are increasing the restricted beginning balance to buy an additional, oh, I can't talk, $54,225. The expenditures would be for law enforcement. The expenditures would be for law enforcement, overtime reimbursement, and all of this is due to the effects of the COVID-19 pandemic. The program was allowed to carry over more funding than the standard 10%. And the beginning balance increase is to reflect actual funds available, and then the expenditures are per what was written in the grant agreement. And that is all the changes we have to the general fund. Moving on is the American Rescue Plan Fund. First off, we are creating appropriation authority for projects approved under Senator Gellser, Representatives Rayfield and Defazio. Of those, there is the Benton County Wildlife Fire Evacuation Route at $350,000, radio repeaters for Fire Department and EMS at $250,000, the Food Hub for South Corvallis Economic Development at $550,000. And then additionally, we are creating a transfer appropriation to move discretionary ARPA revenue to Fund 514 for the Phase Two remodel of the Kalapuyia Building to offset the rest of those costs. There is also a little tricky maneuvering within this fund. We are doing what is an intra-fund transfer, so essentially we are moving $1.5 million from the general ARPA cost center that we have within the fund, Cost Center 104, and then we are moving that to Cost Center 113, so it is staying within the fund. We're just reallocating its location so we can keep all the funding for, I believe this one is a crisis respite center, all-in-one cost center, so that we can track our expenditures a little better in terms of what we are spending on the actual projects. So that one is just an internal transfer, it stays within the fund, it just moves around a little. I think that covered everything with American Rescue Plan. Next up would be the Special Grant Fund. We are establishing a budget for microenterprises grant. It was established in the prior biennium but not rolled over as the funds were never received and it just got missed in establishing a budget, so we're fixing that right now. So we are getting $150,000 in direct federal C B HD grants. We are also doing an intra-fund transfer in this fund as well of $70,000, and we are taking that from the Benton Housing Opportunity Cost Center and moving that to the Cost Center for Housing Assistance for the Increased Community Services Consortium Administrative Costs. So we're just, again, moving that within the fund. We've established materials and services to increase $150,000 for those pass-through contracts for those grants. This does include the pass-through of the $70,000 to the Community Services Consortium. The intra-governmental services fund, we are increasing appropriation authority in capital outlay of $2,405,000 for the Phase Two Kalapuyia remodel, and then that funding is coming from the transfers and from the general fund, from the FEMA and CARES reimbursed payroll costs, and then a portion of that is also coming from the discretionary ARPA revenue. In the same fund of the Sheriff's Administration, we are increasing appropriation authority in materials and services towards the replacement of bulletproof vests. This is an award from the Bureau of Justice Authority that was applied for and received after the budget adoption, and so that's an additional $7,600 that we're increasing And then the last one is the Benton Health Center Fund. Within that, the center received HERSA funding for the Dada Warehouse Project, so we are increasing the capital outlay for the anticipated cost of the project and reducing contingency by the amount that the county is expected to contribute to the project. So they did receive $614,972. This portion of the project that we are accounting for, the total is supposed to be $875,000, so we would then be moving $260,028 out of contingency into their budget. Are there any questions?
I have none. I think we are okay with that. Thank you very much for that good summary, Jen. Is there anyone who wishes to testify or to speak to this budget amendment? Okay. Hearing no desire for public comment, I will now close the public hearing. And is there any discussion? If not, I will entertain a motion.
Slight discussion. Thanks, Jen, for summarizing and keeping track of all the moving parts that you keep track of. So thank you for that, and I will move to adopt resolution number R 2021-026 in the matter of supplemental budget, 22061.
Second.
Okay. All in favor, please signify with an aye.
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 Aye. Thank you very much, Jen.
You are welcome. Thank you.
Moving backwards, we will now deal with the consent calendar. Do I hear a motion for approval, or is there anything anyone would like to remove?
I will move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, please signify with an aye.
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 Aye. Okay. Thank you for that bit of business. Moving forward to old business, item 6.1, in the matter of a second reading, amending Benton County Code, Chapter 31, Enforcement Ordinance, 2021-0307. I'm looking to see who is here with us today. I believe Greg Ritts is out, and I do not see Gordon Kurtz.
No, Gordon is out till the first of the year, so I think this related to the flood zone, and I mean, I know they discussed it last, I'm sorry, I don't have any more on it, so.
Okay, yeah. It basically updates code because of the National Pollution Discharge Elimination System, Phase Two, this will separate stormwater system permit, requiring specific language about our enforcement processes, and so this modifies those enforcement processes so that we are in compliance, and it also adopts that same approach to enforcement and compliance with four A code violations pertaining to Benton County Code. So we have seen this before, and...
Commissioners, there is a vested motion in your packet on this particular agenda item, and this is considered the second reading?
Yes. And so the motion is on page 93. Be happy to either, to entertain a motion.
I move to conduct the second reading of ordinance number 2021-0307, amending Chapter 31 of the Benton County Code.
Second.
Okay. All in favor, please signify with an aye.
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 Aye. Okay. Second reading, before the Board of County Commissioners for the State of Oregon, for the County of Benton, in the matter of amending Benton County Code, Chapter 31, Enforcement, Ordinance Number 2021-0307. Okay. Now therefore, the Board, the Board of County Commissioners of Benton County ordains as follows, short title, amendments to Benton County Code, Chapter 31, Enforcement. And this ordinance will become effective as of January 20th, 2022. Thank you. Moving onward to 6.2, in the matter of further extending declaration of state of emergency and declaring emergency measures through March 31st, 2022. Joe?
Commissioners, I believe that you have been anticipating this coming before you. We currently have an emergency declaration in place through the end of December of this year. Staff is recommending that the board extend our current emergency declaration until March 31st of 2022. This particular recommendation comes with engagement and support of our Public Health Department, our Emergency Management Office, as well as our COVID executive team, and so we are asking the board to approve the order that's identified on page 114 of your packet today to extend the emergency declaration to the end of March 2022 related to our COVID response.
Is there any discussion? In light of Omicron, I think that we are all pretty sober about our current situation, so this does give us the capacity to continue to contend with this emergency. I would entertain a motion.
I'll move to adopt order number D 2021-080, extending the declared state of local emergency through March 31st, 2022.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, please signify with an aye.
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 Aye. Okay. Thank you. Moving onward, the next section of our agenda is departmental reports and requests, and we have with us Lynn McKee, Natural Areas, Parks and Events, and Steve Martinenko, I hope. I don't see him yet, from the City of Monroe, for discussion and decision approving the railroad right-of-way property lease agreement between Benton County and the City of Monroe.
Thank you, all in commissioners. I didn't know who caller number two, is that Steve Martinenko? I don't think he's able to. I did send him a message that we're ready to go, so hopefully he'll be able to join us. So City Administrator Steve Martinenko, he requests that Benton County Commissioners consider a transfer to the City of Monroe of two tax lot properties located between Ash Street and Cemetery Road, adjacent to Highway 99. The property is proposed to be used for a public park to hold community events such as the farmer's market and the annual Monroe Festival. We discussed this during the September 14th goal-setting meeting. Commissioners reviewed this request and agreed upon a lease agreement with the City of Monroe. This property is part of the Bailey Branch acquisition, and it is designated as a railroad right-of-way. So I did draft a lease agreement. County Council Vance Crony did edit it to make sure that all the railroad banking texts and requirements were included in the lease. Steve Martinenko did take the lease to his city council members who have approved the text of the lease, which is included in your packet. And so that's, we as NAC, the Natural Areas, Parks and Events, currently manages that property, and we're more than happy to see it as a City of Monroe County Park, and then we don't have to take our mowers down there and mow it anymore. So we're very excited about the potential use for the City of Monroe. Are there any particular questions about the lease?
Questions?
Yeah, Lynn, I'm looking at the agreement. Can you turn into English what the situation is with rail banking and, I guess, potential future use of the Bailey Branch, this section of the Bailey Branch?
I'm sure if Vance were here, he would be able to provide much more useful information than I. I do know that it is banked, so that if the railroad were to come back and say, we're taking this property back over, we would have to pass that back to the railroad. We don't anticipate that happening. I know City of Monroe is, is kind of, they're gonna give it a try and see if they can do it. What we aren't gonna do is put on, they aren't gonna build permanent buildings onto this property, so that's, that's acknowledging that this is banked railroad property. They do plan, I believe, to put a parking lot on one end near the library and kiosk, but mostly it's going to be city parks, so any sort of events they'd be utilizing to break canopy and things like that, so that they won't be investing money in buildings that could potentially be, then have to be passed back over to the railroad. And it is a 99, so we are, this is a very long term. We're hoping that they can use this property long-term.
No, great idea, I just, one, you answered my question on how the railroad intersects with the usage of work, so thank you.
Commissioner Malone, also, just to underscore that, there is a provision in the agreement under Section 1.1 that does give us the ability to terminate the lease with nine months' advance written notice, in case there were something that came about unexpectedly with a Bailey Branch or, or other reasons to terminate the lease.
Commissioner Wise?
I just wanted to say, this is awesome. This is one of the really cool parts of our job that we don't get to do enough, so I wholeheartedly support this, and I am ready to make a motion this. We are ready.
Please do.
I move to approve lease agreement number 502913 between Benton County and the City of Monroe for the stated railroad right-of-way property for use as a city park.
I will, I will second that.
Thank you. This is indeed exciting. I echo Commissioner Wise's feelings about this. All in favor, please signify with an aye.
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 Aye. Thank you, Lynn.
Well, thank you very much, commissioners. I'll let Steve Martinenko know, and they'll be thrilled they can get started on their city park. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay. Right next up is Sandy Smith from Health Services, for discussion and decision to approve order D 2021-097, revising 2022 Community Health Center fees. Welcome, Sandy.
Good morning, everyone. I believe Erica is going to make me presenter. I have a small slideshow to run through.
Sure, just one moment.
Let me get this set up. Why are you not seeing my screen? You stop again, and, and, here we go, let's try again. I'm not seeing you all, I'm not seeing the screen share screen. Are you all seeing the screen?
No, we are not.
Hmm.
Is it the same material that's in the packet, Sandy?
It is not, actually, and here, I think I just had it on my, on the wrong, apparently I... Apparently, I can only work on one of my mini screens. So here we go. What you have in your packet is a little bit of the underlying mechanism for how I developed this. And this is just a brief discussion about what we're doing and why. As a general goal, we like to review our medical fees on an annual basis. I made the decision last year to not do that because of the pandemic. We had a lot of things on our plate and it just seems like not something to make a priority at the time. But I did go through the review exercise this year with the thought of having an implementation of fees, revised fees in January. So just a quick review of what we're doing and why. It is a federal requirement that we have a schedule of fees and that we keep those fees in line with prevailing rates and to fees that would cover our reasonable cost of operation and then also to keep in line with the local market. The reality is it has very little impact and there's several reasons for that. And so I'm going to go into that a little bit just to give you some understanding about it. The CHC revenue, total CHC revenue for fiscal year '21 was 20, closer to 25 million. Of that, a little over 63% are generated by direct patient services. So that's 15.7 million. We'll take a little bit of a deeper dive into that. Over 60% of that patient revenue is Medicaid. In '21, 2021, fiscal year '21, almost 30% was pharmacy. That's a little bit high because we had some one-time bonus revenue, if you will, due to hep C, hep C drug treatment. That will taper off and won't have as big of an impact, although pharmacy has typically been within the 20% or so of our revenue range. Medicare is 3.5% of our revenue. Commercial insurance payers are just over 3% of our revenue in fiscal year '21. And our self-pay patients were 3.7% of our revenue. And as we dive into that a little bit deeper and look at why this has really very little impact, Medicaid reimbursement rates are, have no dependency on our fee schedule pricing. We have two alternative payment model agreements. Those are both based on a predetermined rate that is paid to us per member per month. And we, as well as we get, you hear us talk about Medicare, Medicaid wrapped payments, and that is a predetermined rate that's based on the encounters. And I will say that just within the last hour, I have received an email that that predetermined rate, that PPS rate for 2022, is going up by $5 for an encounter. So that's a little bit of good news. But again, not dependent on our fees. Pharmacies, charges are also not dependent on our fees. The majority of that is agreements with the payers that are based on predetermined rates. And the fee analysis that we've done is for our primary and primary care and preventive and for actual visits, not for pharmacy visits. So that will have no impact on the pharmacy revenue. Medicare also is not dependent on our fee schedule because that's a fixed rate. We receive fixed rate payments based on our annual Medicare cost report. Our commercial payers have very little dependency on pricing. We have contracts with each of our commercial payers and they pay by RVU. RVU is relative value unit. It's a way to standardize costs of services provided on a per-unit basis to be able to do comparisons across providers, across organizations. And so that payment is typically not dependent on our fee schedule. Self-pay really has very little dependency on our stated pricing because while the starting point is the stated pricing from our fee schedule, the actuality is that most of our patient's payment is based on the sliding fee scale, which is dependent on their income, not related to our pricing. So only patients that are over 200% of the federally, federal poverty level actually pay full price and even those patients are able to make payments. We looked this time at medical fees and those are the fees that are RVU-based, again, that relative value unit. That makes for some easy comparables. There are published data giving RVUs across a variety of services provided. So we looked at visit fees and we looked at preventive fees. We looked at where we could obtain comparable pricing from other FQHCs in Oregon and from local providers in our area that are not FQHCs. We also looked at, as I mentioned earlier, some of those published national estate average rates. The idea or the goal is to keep RVUs relatively consistent while also not increasing prices or changing prices very largely one way or another. So balancing those, this is the schedule of proposed changes. The top, the top portion of this schedule are those visit fees and the bottom portion are the preventive fees. You can see that after the analysis, we're proposing price increases, in some cases, one case, no price increase, in other cases, price increases between five and I believe the highest is $35. And that is all I have. Any questions?
So overall, Sandy, I think I've been through this process before as, when I was liaison on CHC board as well. But the, this is an exercise that's required. We have to have a fee schedule, but they have very little effect. So maybe that a handful of people end up paying a little bit more and it would only be those that are more than 200% above the poverty level and they're self-paid, correct?
You have summarized that well.
Okay. So thank you for doing this analysis and presenting this to us in such a clear fashion. Are there any questions for Sandy? Hearing none. Understanding also that the CHC board has already adopted this fee schedule?
Yes, that is correct. Thank you. I failed to mention that earlier.
Well, I will entertain a motion for board approval or concurrence with the CHC board adoption of these fees.
Well, thank you, Sandy. And I'll move to approve order number D 2021-097 revising the 2022 Community Health Center's fee schedule effective January 1, 2022.
Second.
All in favor, please signify with an aye.
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 Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Okay. With that, we've concluded our departmental reports and requests and we are, I would like to, before everyone departs, make a couple of quick announcements. And that is that we will not be having a board meeting on the 28th of December and that our offices will be closed on December 23rd and 24th. And that is not just the Board of Commissioners office, but all county offices will be closed on both December 23rd and 24th. Any other comments, Joe, please, before we shift gears?
I wanted to provide a little bit more clarity regarding the meeting that you identified that we're not having on the 28th of December. There is a possibility that we may need an executive session on that day. And so we may have to end up scheduling a executive session for the 28th. That is unknown at this point, but we should have a better idea tomorrow.
Thank you very much for that presentation. Okay. At this time, we will recess our board meeting and move into executive session under ORS 192.6602E, as in elephant. And we will be taking a couple of moments to clear the room for that executive session. The participants will be the board and our negotiating team for real estate. So all others, thank you for attending this morning.